Welcome to the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, June 4th. The board's been in the executive session, so can we have a motion to reopen the public meeting?
I'm in.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
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 It's very jingle.
There's some hardware here tonight, clearly.
It's like jingle bells.
So, with the president's report, we had a lovely ceremony today. I want to express our appreciation here within the public meeting for all the teachers and administrators and custodial staff who are retiring. We will miss them. They put in 198 years of collective dedicated support to this district, which I found to be an incredible number when I heard Andrew say that. And so just want to acknowledge them here as part of the meeting and let them know we will not be forgetting them and they left a lasting legacy. Other things to just be of note, I'm looking forward to all of the ceremonies that are underway, you know, recognizing the achievements of all of our students, and recitals and concerts, and the seniors can see to the end of the tunnel, and so just again acknowledging that as well. On the agenda for tonight, we've got a recommendation to appoint a new assistant superintendent that we'll hear about. We've got a device policy up for reading and for people to send us comments on, and then lots of budget transfers and contracts and things like that. So I think that's the main agenda for today, and I have to do 1.1.1, right? Yeah. So I will move 1.1.1, which is that the Board of Education hereby adopts the 2025-26 Board of Education meeting schedule. Can I have a second for that? One second. Any discussion on the calendar?
Just one quick question. Is there a date that we need to adopt this calendar before the new year happens? Dr. Ackerman?
We need to set the first meeting, so-
Okay.
-have to adopt it.
Yes.
We would have to adopt on the second.
Okay, because I know that we can always make changes to it, once like new people come on and we have a different board.
Yeah, I didn't put the August date in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Ackerman, over to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so first of all, I want to, on behalf of myself, I want to congratulate our retirees who we honored tonight. It is not lost on us how much every staff member in their individual roles in our district has impacted the lives of our students and has changed the way that we work here in support of all of our children. And so I want to just express my gratitude for all of their years of service. And then I just want to look right to Jamie, who's here, who's up there, and express my gratitude to Jamie. She's been a principal here, a director of literacy, and is currently the assistant superintendent for people personnel services. So I want to congratulate her on her retirement. And then go to the next slide. And welcome Dr. Yasmin Halukaray to the district. She has gone through an extensive interview process with us that included a meeting with the central office staff, a group of stakeholders, a site visit here on our campus, a site visit to her current place of employment, and then ultimately a meeting with our full Board of Education. And so we're at the place tonight where we feel really confident in making this recommendation for your consideration. And right now Yasmin is at Rockland Bosie's as the assistant superintendent of human resources, but her heart and her work has really been centered in special education. And she has been a special education teacher, a principal, an assistant principal, and assistant director, and all that work has been in support of students who need, who are differently abled and have individualized plans to help ensure their success in the academic setting. So Andrew, did you want to make any comments as the person who spearheads our hiring practices here?
It was thorough. I feel a little bad for Yasmin Halukaray, who went through many, many steps again and again, meeting with, you know, small teams and large teams of people and Board of Education members, and went through two site visits. It was an incredibly thorough process, but through that process, I think we really got to know her work very well, and she got to know us very well. And we get to the point where we say like, this is going to be a fantastic match for us in the future, and we're so excited to have her join the team.
So Yasmin, I actually, I wanted you to invite you up to the microphone, just to introduce yourself to the community. And wow, do we have a showing today? We've all come out with their, to meet you. So, please.
Thank you so much for that warm reception. It has been a wonderful process to get to know the Chappaqua community, the Board of Education, the leadership team. And I just want to say that I am truly honored and privileged to be joining such a wonderful, wonderful community such as Chappaqua. My work has always been focused on the student at the center. It is the heart of everything. And through our partnership with both parents and staff, educators, the Board of Ed, the leadership team and the community, I only can see that there will be great things ahead, building upon the work of Jamie and her team. I want to wish Jamie a wonderful, wonderful journey in her retirement after over 30 years of service to public education, and I wish her nothing but the best. And to the Board of Education, and to Christine, and to Andrew, and the entire leadership, I want to say thank you for your support and trust as I enter into this new role.
And so, two more highlights on the agenda. So we have our school resource officer contracts up for the board's reconsideration. These are three-year contracts for the three officers that are based in our elementary schools, our middle level, and then here at Horace Greeley High School. And we do have some new language in the class, in the contract this time around that talks about communication when officers are on leave, and also a joint evaluation system. And that was based on some feedback we received from the community. And then on the agenda tonight is the CCT MOA, which is there, which is a process that involves both union leadership and the district leadership and coming up with a new contract for the next five years. And so we're at a place where the contract has been approved by the full CCT membership and that, and that it's in, and before the board tonight for your consideration. And then I just wanted to, I haven't done this before with a contract. I've done many of them here, but because there's so many things within this contract that have been priorities for this Board of Education, I did want to highlight some of them tonight before you act on the contract later in the agenda. So the first is, moving forward, there'll be two night conferences for K through 12 parents. What those will look like, we're still working to figure out, and we'll begin that process if the contract is approved tonight by the board. They are, there are the addition of four academic teams at the high school. We piloted debate, and so next year we're adding Science Olympiad, Academic Challenge, and Robotics. And based on enrollment, these teams may also have assistant coaches. We've reduced the class size thresholds in our elementary schools at first grade and for grades two through four. We have points allocated in there to support middle school programming here at Horley, Horace Greeley High School. So we're going to have the buses bring kids up here and do some specialized programming for them. We've added additional coaches at the modified level and at the, at the second, at the high school level based on enrollment, because we felt like there was a need there. And then we also, in the contract, have monies allocated to support a new student program for, for our, our students who move into the district in grades one through 12, which is a priority area for the strategic plan. And then just our upcoming, now we're getting ready, we're rolling here, we're heading towards the end. So we have, we have one more musical, we have our senior awards ceremony with the prom tomorrow, we have an a cappella concert, we have the Wizard of Oz happening, our moving up ceremonies or athletic awards. We are getting ready to end the school year, and so it's a really exciting time for us and for our families in particular, for our seniors. So we look forward to celebrating as we, as we begin to move into the month of June. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman. Are there committee reports tonight?
I mean, we had a policy meeting, but it probably makes sense to wait and discuss it when we discuss the policy.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You, Kelly?
Yes. Sounds good. We also had a health and safety meeting. Matt, do you want to report that?
Go ahead. We just really wrapped it up.
Yeah.
I mean, we put a bow on the year. I mean-
Yeah, I mean, I happen to have the agenda in front of me, and I'm not even going to say more about it. I'll just read off like what we, sort of like a year-end review on new projects for '25, '26. The Ballards at Greeley, the Guard House at Greeley, a unified communication platform, new landline phones, E911, was that the?
That's part of the unified communication system of moving the way our 911 services work through a bunch of different directions.
Yes, that, exactly. The new walkie-talkie system, cell service boosters at Roaring Brook, but which we would love to have everywhere, but they're piloting it at Roaring Brook, Roaring Brook, camera projects, lockdown system project, Graffling Gate, and the various capital projects. Anything else?
No, that was comprehensive. Thanks. Melissa?
We had a communications committee meeting, and again, we racked up the year. We talked about our ongoing projects, one of which is the bot, the Greeley bot, for our website to make search functionality easier for families to access information. So we're going to start piloting that in the fall, and we're just still deciding between which company is going to support, the tech company that's going to support the bot for the website. But that's really exciting, because if you could Google things like, you know, what day six, what day of the day six calendar is it, and what's for lunch, and when is my, you know, kids' conference, things like that, to make the website more user-friendly. And we just wrapped up the year and talked about our achievements and what we'll do for next year. Did I miss anything?
Do you have something more, Kelly?
Yeah. Actually, I have two more things. One is, I just, I wanted to remind everybody, and there happens to be some students here in the audience. I don't know, Dr. Ackerman, how many applicants we've gotten thus far, but tomorrow is the deadline for the ex officio student board member. One lucky Greeley student will be able to join us here starting July 1st, and the deadline is tomorrow at 3:00 p.m., right?
Yes.
Nine applicants so far. I did hear some feedback that 50 signatures was a challenge, and, but it made them work.
(inaudible)
Oh, okay, so that's a different perspective.
From a broad constituency group.
Yes.
Ranging from K-12, 11.
How many elementary signatures?
Cute. That's pretty cute.
But, right.
They're interesting.
So, so there's still time. If there are students who are interested, it is competitive. Don't be sad. If you don't get chosen, we only choose one, so there's always next year. But I wanted to kind of remind everybody that the deadline is coming up. The other thing I wanted to say was, I'm honored to share that I was officially appointed to the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association, WPSBA Board of Directors, on June 2nd, which was this past Monday night, following a vote by 54 member districts across our region. Being nominated to WPSBA slate of officers and then affirmed by such a distinguished group of educational leaders is a true privilege. Really, it is. I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity and to work collaboratively on behalf of public school districts throughout Westchester and Putnam Counties. I look forward to contributing to WPSBA's mission, which is strengthening public education, advancing inclusion and belonging, and supporting thoughtful, informed governance across our region. Thank you to the member districts and all of you for your trust and support.
Congrats.
Okay, it's time for public comment. We welcome public comments. In respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. Are there any public comments tonight?
Hello, I'm Chandana Nalan, and I'm the current Greeley Vice, PTA Vice Chair, and also have been STEM Committee Chair from 16 to 23. And I have two children, one who's graduated out as a class of 2024, and I have a current ninth grader at Greeley. This is my own personal statement. It has nothing to do with PTA, so just wanted to clarify that. And first and foremost, I want to thank the administration for figuring out and to create, establish academic teams, and I'm very thankful for that, which has been probably one of my wishes for a very long time, so I'm very glad it's happened. And we, as Science Olympiad parents, are hopeful and excited to figure out what this change means and how we can make the program stronger. I would like to, I would like academic teams to follow the same process as the sports teams and start the program in the third week of August, if it's possible. And to make the August timeline happen, we would like to request to have registration open similar to academic teams, similar to the fall sports teams going forward. And the students who have been executives for this club as, as, which has been how it's been run in Greeley, have been really exemplary, and they've been managing the team really well, and doing it in, with the limitations they've had. This current change and status of what it's going to be hopefully will make the team more competitive, and we hope to see these teams, Greeley team, to be a national team very soon. That's the hope. Because as you already know, Seven Bridges has been the three-time national team for the last three years, and Bell has been really rising in things, and we have representation from Bell and Seven Bridges both to really support this academic change team, because they're all, most of them are rising ninth graders, and they all want to see how this is going to be impacting them and support this. Thank you.
For those who aren't used to coming to board meetings, one thing around public comment is we ask that people actually not react to the people commenting, and let, because we're going to welcome all viewpoints, and so let's, let's let each of the speakers speak and do our best to limit our reaction. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Daniel Ning. I have a ninth grader at Greeley, and also had a senior last year who graduated. For those who don't know me, I was involved with Seven Bridges Science Olympiad program since 2018, and I was also the main parent coordinator between September 21 and July 24. I'm extremely proud that together with fellow parents, teachers, and the administration, we were able to create a really special program for those middle schools' kids who not only love, love science, but also love to compete. It's really something that's unique in, you know, the STEM field and teams, teams, there's no really comparable team-based competition. The 2022-2023 season was really a watershed moment, the first time in history that a team from CCSD qualified for the national tournament, which gave the 7B team the chance to compete against the best middle schools in the country, and we placed 13th that year. That was quite amazing. And since that year, 7B has made two consecutive trips to the national tournament, including this past May. Shout out to the kids here who came, you know, with their medals and, and trophies, you know, for the past season. Truly remarkable when I look back at truly, you know, how humble, how humble our beginnings were and how far we've come. 7B is now recognized throughout New York and nationally as one of the best Science Olympiad teams in the middle school division. These middle school, middle school students have moved on to Greeley, where they all have aspirations and dreams of participating at the national tournament again, but representing Greeley this time. And I can actually concede, there's a trophy right there. For those of you who don't know, Greeley actually, I think, placed third in 1995 or 1996, and it hasn't really done that well since then. But unfortunately, it's been now very clear for the past two years that the club model was not really appropriate for what has really become a very high-profile extracurricular activity in the high school. And so I'm very grateful to Dr. Ackerman, Dr. Seppi, and all the board members who truly like, you know, considered changing the Science Olympiad from a club to a team structure. I'm super excited that, about the change, and I hope it's the first of many, that will finally give all the students the chance to fulfill Greeley's potential to be the best team in New York. As someone who has lived and breathed Science Olympiad for a number of years, I know there's a lot that goes into the program, planning, logistics. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask for one more minute?
Yes, we just need to do a quick motion to grant you that, so just hang on for a second.
Sure.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to grant an additional minute?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah. One minute to wrap up, please.
Yes, it will be one minute. So as someone who's lived this for, for a number of years, I know there's a lot of planning, logistic that goes into creating a winning Science Olympiad program. Coordinating three teams of 15 students who are paired to compete in three or more different events is not easy, especially if it's the first time that a new coach is doing this. It can get overwhelming very quickly. I would be very happy to make myself available, as needed, to share my experience and insight about how best to come up with the learning curve and avoid pitfalls, so that we can have a really successful 2025-2026 Science Olympiad season at Greeley. Thank you.
Any additional comments tonight?
Too short for this. Do I have to?
It's tilted down.
Clearly, I don't speak into microphones that. Hi, I'm Cara Cook. I have three kids in the district, a sixth grader, an eighth grader, and a graduating senior, so I'm going to not cry about that. I was the Bell parent lead for the Science Olympiad program this year. We had 45 kids participating with a waitlist. We came in fourth, fifth, and 18th in states, and 13th in the New York State competition. We are so, so grateful that Science Olympiad will be an academic team next year. Our eighth graders are super excited to meet up with their 7B friends and be part of this. Science Olympiad goes beyond the subjects. It's teamwork, it's, they're learning how to manage priorities, it's resilience, it's friendship, it's so, so much. We had 23 to 30 parents involved just making this work at the middle school level. My husband actually coached a team for three years, and many, many parents are involved in this. And so my request here is that we use all of our resources in this community. So we're thrilled it will be a team and that there will be, you know, paid professionals to help. But this program is, I learned so much by running it, is so complicated, and there's so many pieces, and I hope that we can engage all of the parents to help in any way that's appropriate, so that we don't lose all the learnings that we've had from building these teams at 7B and Bell over the years. And so appreciative of all of the support of Science Olympiad. It's just a phenomenal program. If you've ever been to a competition and, you know, you see all these kids, it's amazing. So we're so grateful. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Gomez, a proud parent of a ninth grader and a Science Olympiad enthusiast at Greeley. I want to thank the administration and the Board of Education for their innovative ideas, tireless dedication, and commitment to our students' success. As a member of the Science Olympiad community, thank you for considering a team designation for academic clubs at Greeley. This forward-thinking step would build on the team's recent achievement of placing in the top 10 in New York State. Your recognition of their hard work, diverse talents, and passion fosters skills that will shape their futures. A team designation would unlock additional school resources to support a competitive Greeley Science Olympiad team. This program offers students unique opportunities, exposing them to subjects beyond the standard curriculum. For those who may not find their place on a field or a sport court, Science Olympiad provides a sense of belonging in spaces like the chemistry lab or the STEM Center. This designation would boost team morale and help students achieve their true potential. The students have been very successful at the middle school level, and they come to Greeley with the same expectation. If the agreement is approved, we propose that a small group of parents or a parent liaison meet with the administration or board to help coordinate these new efforts to make Greeley competitive at the national level. Our community includes experienced parent coordinators who have successfully led the 7B team to the Science Olymp, Science Olympiad National Tournament for three consecutive years. Nationwide, approximately 8,000 teams compete in Science Olympiad, including 650 teams in New York. The National Science Olympiad Tournament is the ultimate achievement for the top 120 teams in the nation. Thank you for supporting our students and advocating for science. If academic teams are approved, we hope to collaborate with you to bring this vision to reality. We are here to help. Thank you so much.
I haven't written anything, and I'm losing my voice, but I decided I should talk. I'm Ying. I'm here for 10 years. I have freshman, I'm a seventh grader. Three and a half years ago, I was here, first and ever attending a board meeting in Chappaqua, and addressed to Dr. Ackerman that I was petitioned for more support for the Science Olympiad team. At the time, we had 45 students. Since then, we grew from 75 students in the last two years, and we've been three times national team. My daughter is a national champion in experiment design, and my second one just came back from Klamen Bastard with the national medal. Okay? We are Chappaqua. We changed our T-shirt this time. No longer Seven Bridges. We're Chappaqua. We went there representing Westchester, New York. We're proud to be here. I want the support to support us. Dr. Ackerman heard me. I was very happy. Ever since then, we had that conversation. We've been getting buses, we've been getting school access, we've been getting gym accesses. We have designated a teacher to support us go to tournaments. And when Mr. Hall wasn't available, we have a sign teacher to accompany us go to all those tournaments, made it possible. So appreciate. I'm glad you heard us. I had a meeting with Ryan and Hillary right after the board meeting for some other issues. At the time, we're trying to clarify, what's the parents' responsibility? What's the responsibility for school and the PTA? Ryan looked at me across the table and said, you're in Chappaqua. You know, the tradition in Chappaqua is parents take majority of responsibility and work hand-to-hand with the school. I heard you. All the parents here heard you. That's why we're all here. We're not just chauffeurs. We're coaches. We're party planners. We're hotel booking specialists. We actually make food. We have fashion designers here, too. We're also coaches. We have all those specialists here. We're here to support and make this team possible. Seven Bridges number two in regional, Bell's number three in regional. You know, Horace Greeley have the best high school candidates outside the whole Westchester. I won't say the whole state, but we have the best candidate to win a national in the New York State. I'm glad to hear that today. We've become an academic team. I was in tears when I heard that yesterday. I want to be sure that everybody understand here, we're not trying to step on the toes of the schools. We're all here, try to work with the teachers, support the schools. Please, let us help. Thank you.
All right, good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Victoria Chang, and I'm a current freshman at Horace Greeley High School, and next year will be my fifth year participating in Science Olympiad. Throughout my Science Olympiad career, I've had the opportunity to compete at Nationals twice, winning first place, and have also witnessed firsthand how impactful this program can be, both academically and socially. One of the most important things I've learned is that success starts early. The teams that start in the fall, attend invitationals, and build a strong team bond early on are the ones that do well later in the season. But beyond scores and placement, the early preparation builds something else, a sense of belonging. Attending invitationals makes an especially big impact. Those tournaments don't just help us prepare for real competitions. They give us opportunities to network with students and professors from different schools, as well as explore college campuses where most invitationals are held. One of my good friends who I've, who I met through Science Olympiad is currently at his dream school, UC Irvine, and the reason he was able to figure out where he wanted to go was because he attended a Science Olympiad Invitational at that campus. Additionally, many of my closest friends, many of who are here tonight, are people that I've met through Science Olympiad. We've traveled to invitationals together, studied together, and hung out in each other's hotel rooms after tournaments. Science Olympiad didn't just give me knowledge, it gave me a new community of people, not just in school, but all across the country. I've also seen students win many scholarships through Science Olympiad, either from their performance at Nationals or recognitions from universities and organizations partnered with Science Olympiad. One of my friends, who I also met at Nationals, received an invitation to the 2025 CDC Epidemic Intelligence Conference, as well as a specialized tour of the CDC headquarters in Atlanta, due to his impressive performance at Nationals and the event Disease Detectives. Imagine how many opportunities could become available to Greeley students if we were to strengthen the program that we currently have at Greeley. Science Olympiad has truly changed my life for the better, and has made me more knowledgeable, social, and has given me the opportunity to explore my interests, giving me clarity on what I'm passionate about, as well as what I want to pursue in the future. As we look ahead, I hope we continue investing in building up a strong high school Science Olympiad team by starting early, attending invitationals, and strengthening our overall team dynamic. Thank you for supporting Science Olympiad and all the, and all the students like me whose lives have been changed by it. have been changed by it.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Ning, and I'm currently a ninth grader here at Horace Greeley High School. Next year will mark my fifth year participating in Science Olympiad, and I'm incredibly grateful for everything this program has taught me about science, teamwork, and leadership. I first joined Science Olympiad in sixth grade, where I was allowed to compete with the middle school team. At the time, I was new, but I quickly found a community that challenged and inspired me. From those early years, I learned not only academic content, but also how to collaborate under pressure, manage my time efficiently, and take ownership of my learning. Over time, I competed in multiple events and had the privilege of attending Nationals twice during middle school. So naturally, when I came to Greeley, I was excited to continue my Science Olympiad journey, but now at a high school level. Unfortunately, this year didn't quite match the expectations many of us had. Due to the way the club was structured, we weren't able to attend any in-person Invitational tournaments, which significantly limited our opportunities for growth and development. Competing in person is a fundamental part of the Science Olympiad experience. It gives kids a real sense of purpose, which allows them to test their knowledge in a new and challenging environment. With that being said, I'm truly excited about the direction our team is now headed in. I'm hopeful that we can attend more tournaments, which would allow us to connect with coaches and mentors from other schools, as well as meeting kids from around the country who are just as passionate about science. I've learned from past experience the importance of starting the season early so we can assign events, form study pairs, and begin preparation well in advance. It gives the students the time they need to explore challenging topics to the best of their ability, build reliable devices, and develop constant success that is vital for the competitions. I firmly believe this team can become stronger than ever with the new team structure. Our goal is not just to compete, but to also foster a strong community of students who are passionate about STEM, who push themselves to grow, and who support each other every step of the way. I know from personal experience just how powerful that kind of environment can be. Thank you so much for your time and for supporting students who are eager to explore science beyond the classrooms. And with your continued support, we can ensure that Science Olympiad remains a place where students thrive both as learners and leaders.
Hello, I'm Noel McKaisak, and I'm an eighth grader who is attending Seven Bridges this year. Last year, I moved to the Chapacua Central School District, and when I first came here, I was new and I didn't know that many people, but I first joined Science Olympiad last year, and I was paired up with different people to study with, and I quickly made many new friends through this program. So we first went to invitationals and different competitions at the beginning of the year, and quickly I realized how fun it was to be with people who are like me, who want to compete in science. And I feel like that that opportunity really make me feel home in our school district. And then this year, I ended up going, I was privileged to be part of the team that went to the national tournament, and there I also met a lot of new people and got to see things that I otherwise wouldn't have seen if I didn't get to be part of this program. So I'd also like to thank a lot of our coaches, because I know how much planning they put into this, because without them, we wouldn't have been able to book hotels, get food, like, there's a lot of stuff, like, in the background that I don't know if everyone thinks about the first time they hear about Science Olympiad. But a lot of times, they only think about the education part, but there's a lot more to it besides that, the community and planning. So I'd like to thank them for that, so, thanks.
Hi, I'm Eli Gilkmann. I'm currently an eighth grader at Seven Bridges. I've been in this program for three years. I joined in sixth grade. And I think, you know, I can speak on behalf of everybody, I'll just keep this short, by saying, you know, we've worked really hard to get here, and we want to keep going, and we want to make you guys proud, and we really want to thank you for allowing us to do that.
Any final comments?
I didn't really plan this, so I'm just gonna make it up on the fly, but it's true stories. Actually, we moved into the-
Say who you are first.
Oh, sorry. I'm Shelges Sait. I am, my son is a freshman, and we moved to the school district, actually Chapacua, in his seventh grade, so about three years back. Science Olympiad really was an opportunity here. We moved from Edgemont, Edgemont did not have it, but that was really a special add-on to the Chapacua community. When we came in, we found STEM-based folks who were ready to, A, learn science, second, compete in it, and C, have fun. I think that really gave my son and me personally a great network. Not just a network, but just somebody you can have fun with and you can actually bond with. But as we experienced Science Olympiad, I actually became a coach. I have coached Reach for the Stars and Solar System for about three years, two years, I would say, in middle school. Love the astronomy content here in the current, in the DIVC, the Division C, which is the high school level. But what I'm trying to say is, A, it's tough. It's not easy to do the, to be, to be actually, being a coach, the content is very difficult. It's, but yet, people get together, have fun with it, and we learn and we compete. And it's been, us really, an avenue for all of us, for especially us newcomers, and also for the people together, to, A, get to know and just really form a community. But also, B, community where you're, again, exchanging and brainstorming ideas, and I think it's a very important problem-solving skill you need eventually. That's what science is all about. And I also, being a coach, I realized how much I had to study, because, A, it was a topic, and if you go to national levels, it's really talking about physics in college, or even higher, maybe, but I had to revise a lot of my physics to really be able to teach the people. I guess what I'm trying to say is, the earlier we start, the better it is, and that really gets you to compete at really high levels. So very grateful for all of you having made this an academic team, very excited about it, would love the opportunity to help out as parents and, you know, and really provide our insights we've learned over the next three years as well. Any way we can help, that'd be great, and thank you for all that you've done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll keep this short. Viveka Gastea, I have a seventh grader and a second grader here. I came here as a supportive spouse and a supportive dad, but I saw an open mic and I decided to speak for a couple of minutes. Thank you very much for the themes that you've created for Science Olympiad, but also thank you on behalf of the robotics parents and the academic challenge parents. We, I, my daughter, and I know a bunch of other seventh and eighth graders do Quiz Bowl, and will be excited to be a part of the academic challenge team when they get to Greeley. And Bell made it to Nationals at, this year, for the first time, so we're a couple of years behind the Science Olympiad parents, so I hope to have fifty parents show up here two years from now, and thank you all again for a successful academic challenge team program at that point. Thank you.
All right, going once, going twice? Okay. Onto item three, approvals and ratifications now. We will do three-one and three-two together. These are accepting the minutes for May 21st and May 29th. Can I have a motion for those two items?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Three point three, we'll do the motion and then have the discussion. Three point three is the first reading. Oh, there's no motion, right. We're just doing a reading. My mistake. So three point three, then, is Policy 5031. This is about internet-enabled devices. Would members of the policy team care to summarize?
Sure. I'll start, and then, so, there's very little here that's actually left up to district discretion, so I want to start by saying that, as most people, probably our students are more acutely aware of than our parents. The governor has mandated, basically, that there's no internet-enabled device for non-academic purposes in school during the school day. So what that looks like for our elementary and middle school students, according to our new policy, is basically what our policy has been forever, as far as I know. You can't have your cellphone out during the school day. This also goes for the smartwatches or anything that you can access the internet. Obviously, devices being used for academic work are exempt from this, from this policy, both on the state level and on our level. At the Greeley level, we've tried to acknowledge that Greeley is not the same as elementary and middle school, and that there are, you know, we have an open campus, that students do years, their phones, hopefully, they don't use them, but can, should we have an emergency situation, phones are part of our emergency response plan. So the state law allowed for flexibility in those areas, and so we have provided that flexibility in our policy. Dr. Ackerman is going to be pushing this out to the whole community.
So my plan tomorrow is to make an announcement at Horace Greeley, and then share it with ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders for feedback, and then share it with our K through eleven parents, and then all of our faculty. And then we'll have a way to collect the feedback that they provide for us, and then we'll review it next week in the policy committee. Kaylee, did you want to share anything about the policy before I talk a little bit more about it?
Well, I just want to say that, just like what Hillary said, that it's been, it's not a board policy, but it's been building level policies in each, at each building, where, especially in elementary and middle schools, that if you do have a phone, that you don't take them out during the school day. It's in your locker, or it's in your cubby, or it's in backpacks. It won't look different, and I think what we're going to recommend is that by giving flexibility, we want to encourage our students to be responsible, right? And I think our students have been, but this is, like Hillary said, this is mostly all law, and it's mandated. And so we want to, as a district, be able to give flexibility where we can, but because we have to follow the law, but we also want to be serious about it when we're doing it, that, that is the case. Because if you will read the policy as it is written in its first draft right now, at the end, it'll say that a student shall not be suspended solely for assessing and accessing an internet-enabled device in violation of this policy, but that does not mean that if you don't cooperate and don't listen, that there could be other consequences. So just wanted to highlight that.
So I'd like to share this. So tonight, we had some wonderful students come and speak. We have a lot of students here with awards in the audience, and we have fabulous parents. And because of how our students show up to school, we've created a really flexible environment here at Greeley for our kids. And nine times out of, almost all the time, our students rise to the level of our expectations. And because of that, we offer a lot of freedoms, and I think it is really what makes Greeley an amazing place to go to school. So when you have the governor and our legislators approving some, a mandate for us to follow, it becomes a little bit hard for us because it really doesn't align with how we operate here, but we also know that we need to follow the law. Like, that is part of what our responsibility is as your superintendent and as board members. So we're really trying hard to build as much flexibility in this as possible out of respect for our students at Greeley. I'm not saying this, because middle school and elementary, those phones are supposed to be out, kids aren't supposed to have them. If they're on them, they're not doing the right thing. That's how it's been. But at Greeley, kids use their phones for academics, they use their phones to check in with us when we have emergencies, and it's not a problem for us. We don't have interactions with students around their phones on a regular basis that are problematic. So we're not trying to create a policy that's now going to create that situation for us, but we need to comply with the law. So we are going to create opportunities for teachers, if they choose to, to have students that already exist, store their devices in certain sections of their classrooms, or kids can choose to have them on them, but they need to be away. We are going to allow students to use their cellphones in classes for instructional purposes at the discretion of the teachers. We are going to continue to allow students to bring their own devices. We don't, we, our kids bring their own, we bring their own devices here to do their work, in the library, in the cafeteria, in the hallways. All of that is going to continue. What we're, what we're trying to do is manage the moments where students would be on those phones casually in the halls or in the cafeteria, to try to address that, because that's within the spirit of the law. And so that's what our focus of this policy really is. And so Hillary and Kaylee and I are trying very hard to present something that honors what we're required to do, but also respects the integrity and what we believe in in this school. So our first strategy is, we need to push this, kids are already talking about it. So we're going to push out our plan tomorrow, and I'm going to, I'm going to say some of this over the loud, I don't know if I've ever made an announcement over the loudspeaker here. I'm doing it tomorrow, because I want kids to understand we're doing this with integrity and with fidelity, but we also understand that this isn't normally how we operate here, okay? And then I'm going to push it to parents at Greeley in one way, and then the rest of the district in a different way, because there's different experiences based on what age level your children are. And then, and then we need to hear what our staff, how they, how they believe the policy is going to support what we all need to do, or if they have any suggestions on how to make it better. And so we're going to take all this, I'm going to look at it next week, because it has to, under the regulation, under the law, it has to be approved by August 1st. I can't even include it in our code of conduct process, which would have been really helpful for us, and it would have given us a little bit more time. So we're going to do our best here, and I think we've done a pretty good job at the first draft. And so I want to thank Kaylee and Hillary for meeting so quickly to try to create something that didn't exist, to be able to put us in a position where we have a pretty solid document right now that we can even probably make better based on the feedback we receive from all the stakeholders. So that's, that's, that's my, that's my, that's my feeling on it.
All right. Other questions or comments from Matt or Alyssa?
No.
Okay. So we'll look forward to community and student feedback. I know my eleventh grader has some very specific feedback to offer, so we'll make sure that gets submitted. Let's go to item four.
Oh, I recommend, I recommend four point one instructional as presented.
I will move four point one. Can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Kay, you just appointed Yasmin. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, so congrats, Yasmin, that was you.
Okay, there's no non-instruction.
Okay, there's no four point two, so now we're up to the consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items estimated by the superintendent. We've got five point one through five point two-two. And so that's got the typical CSE summaries, it's got some budget transfers that are pretty typical for the end of the year, it's got the teacher contract, and some other contracts. Does anybody want to pull anything out tonight?
No.
Okay, so then can I have a motion for five one through five point two-two, please?
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion of any of the items? Alyssa?
I do have a question for Josh. Josh, five point one-three, five point one-three through, I think it's five point one-seven, all talk about the negative instructional salary codes, and can you just give us all a refresher on what that is and?
Yeah, sure. So when we present a budget, we present a budget with salaries of all individuals at what we expect them to be for the following school year at Abboni. Many times, for a variety of reasons, people move a lane. We have, need additional LPM services, things like that. So there's little dollars that move around in budget codes. So those add up over time. There's also substitute teachers, there's also leave replacements, there's also, so we go through the year and pay people out of the correct budget code that they're assigned. that they're assigned. So, if there's a leave replacement and someone is taking a paid leave of absence, there might be two people there. So, we have other codes that provide those cushion and that money for substitutes, for leaves, for lane changes, for educational advance. So, we're just moving all of that money into the correct budget codes, so at the audit, we show a zero, and we don't have any negative dollar amounts in any budget codes.
Okay, so you don't move it at the time, you do it all at the end?
We do it all at the end, yeah.
Is it, would it be easier to do it all at the time, or?
It would be, there, we can do it probably twice during the year. We had a changeover of treasurer at that time, which is what we usually do. It is easier to do it at the end of the year, because then we could collect all of the information, have it, and then move it at one time and zero out the codes that are supposed to be there, and just do it in one single clean swoop.
I will say though, this comes up every year towards, at this time, and I usually ask the same question every year, and need a refresher just to understand, and just hoping that the community also understands that this is pretty much common standard practice, but nevertheless, we should ask, because when we need the refresher, which I do-
To Josh's credit, the answer was exactly the same as it was last year.
We're trying to get it.
Yeah, and to add to that also, it's important for auditing purposes to make sure that people are paid out of the correct code and the correct building that they're in, as, and, and then make the budget transfers for those people. There, that happens when we budget someone, there might be a foreign language teacher in one building, we need them in another building over time, so all of that, to do that all piecemeal, becomes more challenging than to rather do it at one clean, at one time.
Great, thank you.
So, then, does that, then can you, because you, you mentioned budget transfers, because there's just as many budget transfers on this agenda, as well as negative salary codes?
Right, so, so the budget transfers are moving the money from the salary codes that, because if someone moved, let's say, a building, there'd be extra money in one salary code, we have to transfer that to the other budget code. So, those are all the budget transfers.
Okay, great. I did have a question, separate question about item 5.9. It is about the roof replacement at the annex to Grafflin.
Sure, yep.
And then, just in general, about roofs, how are we doing with that? Like, we have, I know that when we were doing a tour, there was another leak at Roaringbrook, and where are we with that? I know we were supposed to have some roofs done over the summer for Capitol Project?
Yeah, so, this is the, part of the Capitol Project. This is one of the roofs that's being completed this summer, is the annex to the Grafflin roof. So, we are awarding that contract to the roofer to complete that roof over the summer.
That's where the pre-K happens, right?
Yep, that's where our pre-K is.
So, is it just the annex, and we're not doing, we're not touching the actual Grafflin building at all this summer?
For, at this moment, for the, we don't have a contract for the full Grafflin roof this summer, so we have, for the Capitol Project right now, we have a significant number of projects that are happening. We want those to all get underway before we award the rest of the roof.
Okay, but then, that, I'm assuming then, then the roofs are okay for now? That we're not going to have other leaking situations?
Yeah, yeah, there is no leaking situation in the Grafflin roof of the main building. We met with our roofer to determine some priorities of what he needed a contract for immediately, and then, so, and the annex was the one that was in the most need. The other roofs, he had said, our roofer said, can wait three, four, five years, we're not doing that, that's part of the project, we're just awarding the bid for, the contract for the annex roof right now.
Okay, great. And then 5.10, I just want to make sure, that's for math? Is that, is that staff development for math?
Yeah, so I could answer that. So, Shelley is a consultant that we have worked with for years since we implemented Math in Focus. She is an expert in, in all things based in Singapore math. She has been one of the writers of the new memos that the state has been putting out, and she's going to be working with our teachers over the summer and the next school year.
And that's for K through 12?
For, for K through, for K through six.
Okay, oh, right, because it's just Singapore math. Okay, great. And then I just wanted to highlight 5.11, because I think that's what most of-
That's what everybody's waiting for.
Everybody is here for.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of this consent agenda? You say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, guys.
The Science Olympiad academic team has been approved! All right, now I just got to find some coaches, okay?
All right, let's bring it home here with number six, which is acknowledging receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085. This is a 6.1. I will move 6.1, which is an agreement for services with connective learning for the retreat coming up in July. Can I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Facilities, we've got one change order approved by the superintendent to acknowledge, 7.1. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing for eight, and so nine, we'll be together again on June 17th at seven for the strategic planning update, and then, that's it for this year, and the new board will convene on July 1st at seven o'clock. Can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:25? I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.